I was testing, testing.
I'm also testing, testing.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of Skokie School District Seventy-three and a Half Board of Education to order. Today is December ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it is seven oh five. President Nelson and Vice President Nelson, Latasha Nelson, are unable to be here this evening. I will be presiding over tonight's meeting. Can I have an attendance roll call at this time?
Member Amawala, Member Kelly Nelson, Member Wolfinger.
Here.
Member Latasha Nelson, Member Glebe.
Here.
Member Jacobs.
Here.
And Member Chan.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who wants to volunteer to read the land acknowledgement?
At Skokie District Seventy-three and a Half, we respectfully acknowledge that there are lands of the Ojibwe, Ottawa, Potawatomi, Ho-Chunk, Miami, Mi'amami, Ma'amami, Sac, and Fox Religion, Fox Nation, and Kikapu Nations. These nations were forcefully removed from their traditional territories, and these lands continue to carry the stories of these nations and their struggles for survival and identity. As a public institution committed to building a foundation for learning, leadership, and life, and educating our students to be critical thinkers who want to make the world a better place, we have a particular obligation to recognize the peoples of these lands and the histories of dispossession upon which our schools rest. As educators, we recognize that by being silent, we are complicit in ongoing oppression of indigenous people, and we take this first step in fulfilling our responsibility to critically look at colonial histories and their present-day implications as we pay respect to the keepers of the land and the land itself.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. At this time, if you're willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will welcome public comment. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to address the board. There are some guidelines. Comments should be directed to the board as a whole, and please do not name staff members, students, or community members. Please state your name when you come up to the podium for record. Since we have no public comment, we're going to move on to FOIA requests.
We had no FOIA requests this month.
We will now move on to staff recognition. Who wants to start?
Um, I was, so I was doing pickup at McCracken, and I couldn't help but notice all the staff members and building admin and building leadership in the cold just standing there, directing traffic and helping our kids get into their cars safely. So I just want to say thank you to all, anyone who participates in, you know, pick up and drop off because the weather has not been nice.
I'll just say generally to all the education staff, PSRP's, everyone, thank you for just keeping it down in December. I know it's really hard. I, I myself am an educator just before break, but, you know, keep doing the amazing things that you're doing, and hopefully you have a little bit of some restful break and then come back to be even more refreshed. But thank you.
Okay, I would like to thank Karen, Jo, and Dr. Kyle for working so hard on making our budget make sense. I know you're doing a lot of work, and we appreciate the teamwork and appreciate the honest discussions. But I also want to thank our union leaders who have been engaged and have been very helpful in our, you know, thinking of the kids first and our community first. Lots of complicated decisions and, you know, I appreciate everybody's teamwork, so thank you. Okay, we are going to move to the public hearing of the two thousand and twenty-five levy. May I have a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting and enter into the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
The motion is moved by Matthew Glebe and seconded by Karen Chen.
I'll do a roll call. Member Wolfinger.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
And Member Chan.
Yes.
The motion carries. We're now in public hearing of the two thousand and twenty-five levy.
Am I on? Great. Um, there aren't a lot of changes to this presentation from when you saw it last month, and since you were all here last month, I'm going to kind of just move quickly through it to be cognizant of your time. So just as a review, tonight, this slide is different. Last week, last week, feels like last week. Last month, we were looking at the estimates, and you weren't actually approving the levy to be turned into Cook County. Tonight, you are going to review, discuss, and if an agreement, approve the tax levy. I have a note here saying if it is not approved, if we do not approve at this meeting, we'll have to have another meeting within December because it has to be submitted by the last Tuesday of December. So just so we're all aware. Um, these are our timelines, again, so we're all aware. We've hit all of our November timelines. We've posted. We've done the truth in taxation. Tonight, we're at December ninth. We're holding the public hearing. You're at it. And then we're going to have the tax levy as an action item later tonight. It has to be submitted by December thirtieth. That's the last day. Once it's approved, we'll be submitting it within, I would say normally tomorrow, but we have to get some signatures, so it will be submitted before December thirtieth. And then in March and August is when we estimate that we will get our first and second installments. This is vocabulary we've went through before. Again, things that I want to just highlight on this is we have our, our levy, that's our ask, but what we're, what we get is our extension. And so the extension is what the county actually gives to us, so this is our ask that we're coming up with tonight. That ask is based on CPI, which is two point nine percent. The cap is five percent. We're not near five percent. We are going to ask for four point nine nine percent, so we, so we capture all that we are able to capture. But two point nine is our current CPI. Here's that slide on that. Again, that's on, for homeowners who are currently in our district, not for new housing. It's about a two point nine increase. For new growth and reassessment, we look at our ten-year average because we're thinking, these are our remodels, our new garages. Um, we are, we have recently talked with the village assistant manager, I think that's what his name, title is, to see if in the next five years he sees any new growth happening in our district. The answer is no, and we were looking at it for other reasons, and so basically, we are, we're not going to see another jump like two thousand and fifteen in the near future. It's going to kind of be at this level that we're looking at across the other nine years, kind of for the near future. So that's just an aside. You grabbed your microphone like you had a question on that one.
Can I ask questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, I thought that the village is looking to do this investment in Maine. Would that be, that doesn't fall under here?
If they were to do it like right now, when they're looking at like, are, do we have any new, are we looking at any new housing, the answer is currently no at the village. If they were to decide to make that a TIF district and do something with it, which they haven't made any of those decisions, that would change that perspective, but the answer currently is no.
Good to know. So as, as it impacts seventy-three and a half, there's not yet a projection from the village that matters for us. That's good for us to know, though.
Yeah, yeah. We are not in that place yet. They're not in that place yet. Uh, again, this is our reassessment values. We are currently in a reassessment year, so we're in that third year that was twenty-four that you're seeing on there. We'll get reassessed this year, and those new numbers will come to us for next year. We'll probably see a little bit of a spike because reassessments generally bring us up a little bit, which I've shown you before. This is still, they still haven't come out with the two thousand and twenty-four. I was hoping I could give you the new numbers for two thousand and twenty-four for our commercial versus residential, but that number still isn't out yet. They haven't been able to put that together. They are kind of behind, as we mentioned, so. Then we have our fund balances. Again, when we're reporting on the levy or the budget, we give you fund balances. Um, I have now the reconciled fund balances. It changed by, I think it was three dollars. And so the unreconciled to the reconciled did not have a major difference. Again, you see that dip because we are still waiting on our second installment of the tax levy. This was just an education on the max rates that we can ask for on the different funds, and then the expectation versus the ask that we have already covered. And then this is our aggregate levy that we're going to be asking you to approve tonight, which is the fourteen point seven million for our ed fund, two point three million for operations, one point two million for transportation, eleven thousand working cash. You can go on down the list. Those are their big funds.
Um, hey, sorry to ask a question here. So I know we're proposing an increase. Is it possible, do you have any estimate for like the expected impact for someone in our district with some assumptions, I know?
Yes. For the record, for anyone watching, Matt is not catching me off guard. He prepped me that he was going to ask me this question. Um, so I looked at the, the tax impact for a four hundred thousand dollar home. The reason I'm using that is because in our community engagement, um, things that we're doing when we're asking Elizabeth Hennessy to do the tax impact, she's using a four hundred thousand dollar home. So just when you see numbers across some of our different meetings, you're seeing the same median home used. It's about two hundred and fifty dollars annually, this increase. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, again, our debt services is the other, this is the non-capped portion of the tax levy, and it's based on our bonds, and so that will, that just rolls in as per our debt book. And this is, we went over this last time. So are there any questions that I didn't answer during the presentation, or any questions that anyone from the public has as well beyond the board?
I just have a point of, I think it's a point of information. We're going to vote on this later in the meeting. The discussion before voting happens now, or is it part of the new business? Is there any discussion later? That's why I just want to make sure.
I think this is your opportunity to ask some questions of her because she's up there, so I'd say, um, next time it comes up, it'd be voting.
So then I'll just share that, um, I think that it makes a lot of sense for our district, given our plans to really be on top and be fiscally responsible to move forward and pass the levy as proposed. Um, I also would ask that as we look ahead to future years, that we don't assume that we will continue to do the levy, or if we do, that we just have a very robust conversation about it going forward. Uh, as, as a resident here, I understand and definitely value us taking care of our schools and contributing towards our schools. But I also know like that taxes are, are a major expense for people, and two hundred and fifty dollars as an example is, is a big expense for some families. So I just ask them, when you guys look ahead to the future years, that you keep that in mind, and although we've approved levies for years, maybe it's something that we can find a way to not rely on in the future. And I'm not saying next year, I'm not saying in two years, but I, I would appreciate that in the future. Maybe we consider that when we're doing projections even. Thanks.
Could I just, for clarification, I'm not completely understanding what the question is. Are you saying to not do levies in the future?
So, um, when we approve a levy, we're, we're increasing the tax on our residents. And our district is primarily funded through homeowners, so that tax is, and you clean me up if I'm wrong, please, because I know it. So.
I'm trying to log.
Yeah, okay. So whereas, um, other districts maybe benefit from commercial or industry near them that really helps handle the tax burden, our district is primarily borne by the residents. So, uh, our residents already know that they have a very high tax relative to surrounding districts, and we provide fantastic schools, and we're, we should continue to provide that, and that's why all of us up here, I think, are supportive of moving forward with the levy because we know the school needs the funds. We know the school's going to use the funds well. But I don't think that even though we miss out on future earnings by not approving a future levy, that, that should preclude us from assuming it in the future.
If, if I could maybe state it in a different way, I think what Matt is saying is he would like the district to consider a freeze. In other, like, in, in other words, we're not going to ask for the increase of CP, like any of the CPI or the four point nine nine percent that we would freeze at the tax level that we're at and not ask for additional funds.
Yeah, thanks. That's, that's, thank you. And not for this levy. I'm not suggesting that for this year or even for next year. I'm trying to flag it, so there's a lot of other work the district's got to do, and the district does need to be responsible, and this is a tool the district has to be responsible. So I'm, I want us to do this. I think it's the right thing to do. But I'm asking when we look ahead that it's something we consider as a freeze in future years. And I'm, I'm, I'm just looking for that conversation in the future. So not now. I definitely think we should, as a board, pass this, but I want to notify the district that that's something I'm thinking about.
No, we hear you, and we can do that because I've been in districts where they haven't increased or they haven't increased to the extent that they can. Um, and that could be part of a presentation of what type of money we'd be leaving on the table on that. Yes, we could do that.
Absolutely something that's easy to do. Anything else for me today?
At this time, the public can also ask questions if anybody is interested. You may go up to the podium. Don't, I'll run to the podium, please. Okay, since we don't have any public comments, we are going to adjourn to, back to the public hearing. I'm sorry, adjourn to public hearing, meeting. Adjourn the public hearing, and may I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing and return to the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Member Jacobs, seconded by Member Chen.
I'll do a roll.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Um, Member Chan.
Yes.
Member Jacobs.
Yes.
Member Glebe.
Yes.
And Member Wolfinger.
Yes. The motion carries. We're back in the regular board meeting.
Next, we have a data presentation by Kevin Paduska, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction and Assessment.
Hello, everybody. Going to come a little bit closer because there are some things on the screen that I'll be pointing out. So you have the slides in your possession, and I'm sure you're going to have some questions along the way, so I encourage you to ask them as we go, as opposed to waiting until we're done. Uh, because I'm going to, I have cherry picked some data for you that helps to paint the clearest story of where we are right now. Um, and it's really important that you be able to walk away feeling confident in your understanding of what you were looking at, okay? All right, so with that, here's what we're going to tackle during this presentation. We're going to work to understand the story of our district's growth so far based on baseline data so that we're empowered to answer questions and speak to questions. I want to emphasize that we are looking at baseline data. So a lot of the data that I'm going to be sharing with you this evening comes from fall benchmark testing, which occurred somewhere between eight and twelve days into the school year. All right, so we are now concluding over the next week our winter benchmark period, at which point we'll have a clearer sense of what growth looks like and not baseline data. And when we present to you again in the spring, we're going to have end-of-year growth data that will help to tell a much fuller story, okay? So if we can walk away with some understanding of that baseline data for satellite and map data, which I'll give you some more information on, we'll be in good shape, and also some new learnings based on questions that you have, right? So we'll break this into three big pieces. One is just an overview of our district goals or our SIP goals. Two is our data story and our big metrics. So one of the questions that you have rightly asked in the past, or this board has asked, is what are the things we should be looking at? So I'm going to paint a very clear picture for you of the things we need to be looking at, and then I'll share the data with you. And here you'll see some subpoints that cover the pieces of data that I'll be sharing with you. All right, sound good? All right, let's jump into the first section, district goals. So here you are looking at our three key district goals. These goals are aligned to our strategic priorities, and they are aligned to the priorities that you have given to Dr. Kyle. We constructed these goals around practices that produce results, okay? So we know from our past data and we know from principles that underpin good teaching and learning that these are the practices that we want to cultivate, and that is why we made them our goals. If we pursue these goals, we get even stronger results, okay? So what you were looking at is exactly what we presented on Institute Day. Goal one is about having a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Goal two is about building responsive instructional practices. And goal three is about building culture and communication with students and families. Okay, so specifically, goal number one on guaranteed and viable curriculum is about building our curriculum using our teaching and learning framework. Goal number two is about building our responsive instructional practices based on information and data we have about our students' learners. And goal number three, culture and communication, building partnerships with families in order to support their students' social, emotional, and behavioral competencies in the classroom, okay? So that is what we have been pursuing, and a lot of the data I am sharing with you is intended to be the beginning of story painted through data about our pursuit of those goals, okay? All right, so let's talk a little bit about the levels of data I'm going to be sharing with you. So you'll see this graphic here, and this is one that we refer to a lot in our conversations about data internally, and that is levels of data being satellite data, map data, and street data. So we did a board workshop last year on this concept a little bit more specifically, but I'll give you the very short version, and that is some data is very close to the student, some data is farther from the student, okay? So when we talk about street data, we're talking about data related to individual characteristics about students. That would be their individual experiences, their home life, everything they have experienced leading up to that point. Data that teachers gather in the classroom observing their behavior, that would be street data. Satellite data, more distant from the student. That would include things like normative assessments or accountability assessments. So a lot of the data I'm going to be sharing with you today falls in these two outer layers, satellite and map data. Okay, just to kind of orient you to the part of the story that the data is telling. Some big ideas I want you to keep in mind. One is that data is information that tells a story. No one data point can tell you everything you need to know. The more data you have, the more complete the story. Two is, um, I guess I told you two. The third one is curiosity is your friend. Okay, so this is baseline data. It does not yet tell an end-of-year story because we cannot predict the future, but it is really, really good to ask questions, okay? So you'll see me asking that, modeling asking a lot of questions throughout this. Okay, so the big metrics. Again, this question has been rightly asked in the past. What are the things we need to be looking at if we want to have a good read on the pulse of our district's growth? of our district's growth? Those are the things. Okay? If you want to call it a scoreboard, you could call it a scoreboard. But we're not necessarily competing. This is the set of big metrics we should be looking at. Again, this is baseline data. So the satellite data we're going to be looking at are highlights from the State Report Card, Fast Bridge Assessment Data, MAP Assessment Data, IAR, and ACCESS. Okay, those all come from Fall 2025. We'll also be looking at a little bit of MAP data. And that is District 219 Articulation Data. That is as of Spring 2024. Okay? There's a little bit of a lag in getting that data because that is all curated in the District 219 Data Warehouse. And then they share it with us. So we'll have some new data in the near future. This is based on Spring 2024. This, that is all curricular and instructional data. You'll see a second column here on culture measurements. We presently do not have those for baseline data because we just administered our Panorama Climate and Culture Survey. So we're not able to present that data yet. But that will be part of that end of year story that we'll be able to share with you. Okay? So that's the scoreboard. Those are the things we're looking at on the scoreboard. Okay? Any questions yet?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I was, because I got a chance. Thank you, by the, I just want to start off by saying thank you. This was, I read through the report and going through again, learning a lot. So thank you for this. This is a lot. Thank you. I tried to understand the difference between some of the satellite data.
Yeah.
Like, I'll give an example, MAP and IAR. I don't think I fully grasped, like, because they have some of the same, like, math as on both, for example, right?
Yes.
So I don't know if you would talk about it here. But how should we interpret these? Are they just complementary? Like, it's just two different tests and use that? Is that the best way for us to look at it? Or is there any distinct thing we should think about when looking at like Fast Bridge and MAP thing?
Yeah, they are mostly complementary, but there are some important differences. I'm going to mention them now and then I'll reinforce them later because it's a very good question. So the quick difference between these, we'll start with Fast Bridge. Fast Bridge is useful in that it allows us to identify subtests that effectively assess, like, micro skills. Okay? So NWEA MAP is a comprehensive assessment. Whereas Fast Bridge allows us to zero in on really specific skills and administer only subtests for those. So you'll see that we primarily give those subtests in kindergarten and first grade. And then we transition to the CBMR, Comprehensive Fast Bridge Assessment, beginning in second grade. And the reason for that is it's going to be, you can zero in on some of those foundational literacy skills. NWEA MAP is a far more comprehensive test. So we cannot pluck out subtests and administer those and then get a read on students' growth through micro skills. NWEA is also much more cleanly aligned to IAR. IAR is a state accountability assessment. It serves a different purpose than NWEA MAP. So MAP allows us to do progress monitoring across the year of students' growth through the same skills that will appear on the IAR. So it stands to reason that if students are performing well on the MAP assessments, they are probably going to perform well on the IAR assessments. Okay? So that's the difference between Fast Bridge, MAP, and IAR. Fast Bridge, micro skills. MAP, comprehensive. IAR, accountability assessment.
Is, so for Fast Bridge, then that's more like kindergarten? Like, it's the, I'm thinking micro skills.
We use it primarily, the micro skills subtests we use in kindergarten. We actually have used them in pre-K too.
Okay, yeah, because I remember some of the.
Yeah, pre-K four, kindergarten, and first grade. And then we begin using a test called the CBMR, Curriculum-Based Assessment, Reading Assessment. And that is something that we begin using in second grade. All right? And then ACCESS is an assessment we use for our multilingual learners to measure their language development. And that is used statewide and nationwide. All right? Hopefully that helps a little bit. And I'm going to reinforce those as we get to the subtests. Okay, so we're going to zero in on curricular and instructional data. So first, I'd like to highlight some elements of the State Report Card, especially the summative designations. If you consider all factors, the summative designations show that our schools are doing really well. And we should be proud of that. Some questions that come up, though, are how can we elevate the growth of our underperforming student groups at Middleton to evaluate, uh, to elevate them to exemplary status? The reason I'm posing that question is because of the way these summative designations are calculated. All right? Admittedly, it's not completely transparent how these summative designations are generated. And the state is also considering some changes to the way those summative designations are calculated. They will not implement anything until next year. And if you were to visit the ISPE website, you would see that they are inviting feedback from anyone in the state who would like to provide the feedback. And they have listening sessions that they're doing too. Dr. Kyle and I had a chance to hear a presentation from one of the engineers of that revision to their criteria. And they are offering us the opportunity to meet with them to basically give them our data. And then they would tell us, using those potential models, what kind of summative designation we might have in the future. So here's something I want you to remember is that in the present model, 70% of schools in Illinois are given the commendable status. 10% of schools are given exemplary status. 70% is a huge range. So if you're thinking of a tower going from 0% to 100%, 70% is commendable. That's a huge chunk of the tower. Which floor of the tower are we on? Now, by all other indications, Middleton cannot possibly be in one of the lower floors. So if we were to plug Middleton data into their new calculations, it is very possible that Middleton would be elevated to exemplary status. It's also worth noting that they cap the quantity of schools that can receive the exemplary summative designation, which means that there may be schools that fit the criteria who are not given the summative designation. So I would argue that it is good that they are reevaluating the way those are calculated. And I'm saying all of that to you so that we can be clear with each other that there is not a devastating deficiency that Middleton needs to repair in order to elevate itself. There are things that we can do to grow. But I just want to be clear about the scope of that challenge. Okay? But this is good news. We should be proud of that. Matthew?
Um, I kind of hinted at this in my email. But so I noticed Meyer isn't on here. Why is Meyer not on here? How does kindergarten play into the evaluation of the district as a whole or the particular schools?
Also a good question, yeah. So in terms of looking at different student groups, Meyer obviously possesses those student groups. Uh, but the metrics that we use are not included in the calculations that they provide. That doesn't penalize us. It just means that there isn't a summative designation given to Meyer. And that may change when they revise the criteria. My guess is in a future presentation, we'll be sharing information with you about what those changes mean.
Yeah, so that's something like they want us to make our pre-kindergarteners take a particular test or something? And we're just like, yeah, we're not going to do that?
Yes.
Okay, oh, yeah, all right. Thank you, that's very helpful.
Yep. All right, any other questions? All right, so we'll move on to looking at these two curricular instructional measures, Fast Bridge and NWEA. We'll focus on reading first. Something that I want you to keep in mind is that when it comes to curricular and instructional measures, there are lots of forces that can act on those numbers. But the one that we control is this. It is the Nexus of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment. Okay? That is our locus of control. The more tightly we can align those three things and the more we can elevate the quality of each of those three things, the more control we have over those results and the stronger the results will probably be. So I'm going to be referring to that as we look at some of the data from those subtests. So we'll start with Fast Bridge, reading. This is in kindergarten. So what you're looking at here are the subtests that we give. And I've given you two years of data. And then for each one, I have given you the percentage of students who are at the 50th percentile or higher, that's green. The yellow bar is the percentage of students who are in the 25th to 49th percentile. And then the red is students who fall below the 25th percentile. Okay? So one thing that you'll see here is that if we look at the green bars, and actually all three, there's a pretty good level of consistency year over year across those subtests. Remember, this is baseline data. So, and it's kindergarten, right? So some of those students were pre-K students with us, some were not. What it's showing is less curricular and instructional effect. And it's showing you more the entry characteristics of those students. Okay? You may be asking, why did we select those subtests? Two reasons. Some of them are known to be, based on research, strong predictors of reading growth going forward. So for example, rhyming is a predictive measure. But others are aligned to our curriculum and instruction. And that is why we selected those subtests. Because we use Fast Bridge in order to support students in the MTSS process. That's why we pluck out subtests. We want to see where students are, where they're performing strongly and where they are beginning to show signs of struggle so that we can use our MTSS process to provide those supports.
I have a question for you, Kevin.
Yes.
And maybe it's because of the MTSS thing. Uh, why the particular quantiles here? Like, the selection of less than 25, 25 to 49, and then 50? Because 50 plus, it means someone who gets all of them right is going to be the same on the chart as someone who got just 50%, right? And like, I'm curious why we don't differentiate that.
So why not have these numbers be like the 11th percentile, for example?
And not having no opinion there, I'm just kind of curious how we land on that. And I don't know, maybe it's related to MTSS, so I, I don't know.
That's why, yeah. So, so basically, students who fall in the yellow, we're looking at closely, we're closely monitoring them for potential intervention needs. Students who fall in the red, we're going to be immediately taking a closer look at those students and potentially connecting them with Tier Two supports.
Do, do we isolate, because it's reading? I don't recall seeing this. Do we isolate this based on ML students?
Yeah, there, I have a slide here coming up that isolates by, yeah, yes. Yeah, so we, we do look at whether students are multilingual learners, they have IEPs, or both, or they're duly identified.
But they're included here, right?
Yeah, they're included in these numbers. Yes. All right? All right. And what you're looking at here is, and, uh, first grade. Sorry, I skipped one. So this is Fast Bridge data, but it is for first grade. And we're seeing a similar phenomenon in that it is entry baseline data. There is something, though, that's revealed in this that the kindergarten data doesn't show you. And that is, I'll give you an example, nonsense words. These are first graders. Nearly all of them were kindergartners in our district. So what you are seeing is, to some degree, a curricular and instructional effect from kindergarten. You're also seeing the summer vacation effect. All right, so you are seeing both of those things. But here's the very positive story that's told in this. Look at the year after year growth for each of those skill sets. They're increasing. Now, one of the questions, Matthew, you had emailed about is what about years before that? Right? And that is information we can poll. And you're going to see that there is an increase from years even before that. So what that tells us is that the foundational literacy programming that we implemented at the kindergarten level is bearing fruit. Students are coming to first grade with stronger foundational skills. The data tells that story. So that's a really good thing.
Sorry, Kevin, can I ask? Because I know we also implemented collaborative literacy. That was at all grade levels this year?
Starting this year.
Starting this year. So did the kindergartners last year? Because I know there were some pilots too. Did anyone? Would any students in first grade or kindergarten possibly have been doing collaborative literacy last year?
About two sections worth of students.
Okay, so.
For, for a short time.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I know it's baseline data too. So like you said, this is, it'd be more the end of the year. Like, we hope we'd see more, okay?
Yes, yeah. And the question you're implying is, does that have any, do we, do we see that in those numbers?
Has there been a lift? Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I don't know that that data reveals that necessarily, but we should.
Oh, it makes sense. It would probably be end of year, right? Because this is baseline, okay?
So what you're looking at here is NWEA MAP reading data. And these are the mean percentiles by grade. So what this shows is the percentage of students in the end pool who, whose percentiles are below our students' mean percentiles. That's what that means. Okay? And I've color coded the bars according to school. And the, the district mean is in green. And this also shows, this is very good. This shows very strong growth. This shows that at nearly every grade level, we're at about 83 to 85% of our students are above the rest of the students in the norm pool for this assessment. You see a little bit of a dip in third grade. And let's go back to our CIA nexus. I think there are two factors at play here. One is there is a shift that begins to take place in third grade where students are moving out of foundational skills and into more critical skills. So that, if you look at lots of data sets across districts, you'll see a similar phenomenon. When we get to some of the later data, though, we are going to see that there are some opportunities for growth, especially with our IEP students, our multilingual students, and also with our Black and Latino students. So you're going to see that appear when we get to some of the subgroup data. All right? But generally speaking, this is all very strong. And we should be proud of what we're seeing here. Just a statistical note to make is that there is like a standard measurement error in NWEA assessments that it's about 2.8 to 3.5 percentage points. So something to keep in mind. So the difference between 85% and 86% for all intents and purposes is the same.
I just want to make sure I understand the 85%. Let's say like district number and with the error. So it's, because it was, the norm, is the norm based on Illinois?
It is based on all test takers in the entire NWEA pool nationwide.
Okay, so it's nationwide, okay. So, okay, that's very helpful. Then, um, and it's by grade level too, right? So like, 77%? This would imply that the, let's say it was the critical thinking change that you mentioned. Maybe our third graders are possibly experiencing that shift harder than, uh, relative to the other grades in third grade than nationwide. Would that be a way to interpret that finding? Because everyone would have a dip, right? Uh, in the NWEA, not just our district. So there might be, we just might be experiencing, we're experiencing more of a dip relative to the other levels.
Yeah, relative to the other grade levels, yes. Third grade relative to all other third graders nationwide. A little bit more, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it could, it also, I mean, it could be like theoretically to a cohort thing, right? Like, maybe it's just, they're different, they're people, right? So they're just different people and, okay.
That, that could be a factor in that, yes.
Any ideas about eighth grade? We're like killing it in eighth grade?
Strong curriculum instruction and assessment alignment.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, and here you're looking at longitudinal data, same thing, but it's longitudinal for the district. All right? So this goes back to Fall 2021. Remember what I said about standard measurement error? This shows that across all those years, we're showing consistently high performance across the district. And that's something to be proud of.
Kevin, I know I shared this in an email. And I also totally understand we don't have this ready. I love to see the pre-COVID levels for both, for all these longitudinal ones. Um, I'm curious how that performance has changed. I know there was a dip from COVID and like to see recovery. So, and not in this meeting, no way. In the future follow-up or something, that'd be great.
I'll just share with the board because that was one of the things I asked when I took this job was, have we recovered to pre-COVID levels? We have. Like, so we have caught COVID and caught up with it. I know that, we don't have it. But I know that's one of the things Kevin shared with me in our first meeting.
Yeah, and it, and when we get to IAR data, I think you'll see, we've, we've actually more than recovered from. we've actually more than recovered from the COVID dip. So, and we can pull the NWA data, given that they are so closely aligned. One should reasonably expect the NWA data to reflect the same thing.
Yeah, that's a good point. I guess I should also ask, though, because the, that recovery is probably, it's based on the performance of our district today compared to students who took the similar tests today, right? So, I, I guess, and this is, you know, me thinking of, there's a lot of strengths in the district. I'm thinking of opportunities. I know generally, when I emailed, I just asked if you have any recommended, like, opportunities for us to continue to accelerate and improve. So I'm curious, though, if the, it could be more of a statement on us recovering, or it's almost like an inflection point, where maybe we are, we were less hit or have been less hit and have recovered a little more, whereas other districts have recovered much less, too, right? So theoretically, it's all relative. So the, the scores could all be much lower, right? But we just happen to have relatively been outperforming other schools. But we're still, we're still worse off, so to speak, than we were pre-COVID. That's the, that's what I'm trying to get at. Is that not, and I also, I'm not asking, I'm not bringing that up as a condemnation, anyway. It's more of a, I like to understand where we are actually absolutely, as opposed to just relatively, in that sense.
Yeah. Yeah, and one of the, I mean, the norms normalize. The, it is, it is relative to something else, so you make a good point about that.
Yeah, I almost, I don't know if, because I don't know if you'd want, the test changes, so you can't just do a comparison of the absolute scores today versus absolute scores.
No.
Yeah, you can't do that. So, and definitely, I guess I'm bringing that up just as a question, and.
But the way, but the way every school district in the state of Illinois and every other state is you look at your IAR, you look at your standardized testing, and every school district has looked at it. And a lot of school districts had huge dips, and I'm sure we did as well. District I just came from, we were trying to catch up to where COVID we were. We're past that, and we're still moving forward. So what we utilize is what our scores were pre-COVID, and then what we are now. We can get that data for the board, no problem. But at the end of the day, like, that's how we'll, that's how we gauge our growth. And it's kind of like an autopsy, where we've got MAP three times a year, we have IAR one. So we get it at the end of the year, and we look, how did we do compared to other years? So we're always using that IAR as that autopsy at the end of the year, but that's what we're comparing year to year. They are different kids, but they took the same or similar test, and those scores are what are driving us. Now, when it changes, I'm old enough to remember IGAP, and now it's IAR. There was like three other ones in between.
ISAT.
ISAT. When the change, when the test changes, that's when it's harder to match both of them. So what we're seeing is growth, and that's a good thing for our district.
Yeah, and I just want to reiterate Dr. Kyle's point about IAR, because it will tell you a different story than NWA does. You were correct that it is all relative. That is the point of norms. You wouldn't necessarily see the dip on that graph. IAR works on cut scores. You would see a dip with that. We did see a dip, and we have more than recovered from that dip. So that is, that is the story that we need to keep in mind in the long term. So what you're looking at here with NWA MAP is IEP students and multilingual students. There are some hotspots for us to be looking at, particularly with third, fourth, fifth, and sixth grades. Okay, now, these are lagging measures for baseline. Second grade, or third grade is, to some degree, a reflection of second grade. Fourth grade is, to some degree, a reflection of fourth grade, third grade, rather. So you see that kind of lagging impact there. I'm posing this as questions, because we know, based on principles in teaching and learning, that tooling the CIA nexus is how we're going to generate stronger results. That goes back to our goals, guaranteed and viable curriculum and responsive instructional practices. It's part of inclusion, which you heard a lot about from Angela Demay's presentation. So that is why we are pursuing the development of those practices and those curricular elements. It stands to reason that it will help to elevate these discrepancies. It is important to also keep in mind that with IEP students, like special education students and multilingual learners, there's always going to be some discrepancy. These are normative satellite measures, and they tend to reflect that at scale. But this kind of deviation is something that we do need to take a closer look at. And we are, and those are the goals that we are pursuing in, aligned to the need to see those improvements.
Kevin, I'm sorry.
Yes.
To interrupt, can you speak to what happens between grade four and grade five? There's a huge discrepancy in our multilingual learners. It goes from 54%, hopefully I'm understanding this graph correctly, to 13%. Is that a function of new kids coming in? More, like an increase in multilingual students, or what is that a function of? Can you speak to that?
The number of multilingual learners could have an effect on their percentages. But the percentages are meant to help normalize the read on that data. So I think that's actually less of a factor. I think the greater factor at play here is what is happening with students from a curricular and instructional perspective. And so, the number of kids in each percentage could, could be a variable, but it wouldn't account for such a significant discrepancy.
And do we have any information? Can we speak to that at all, why there's such a discrepancy? The nice thing is that we start to see an increase, grade seven, grade eight, but it's still like, just such a huge dip.
This is why I posed it as a question. How can we support, and that, that comes down to how we support our teams and looking closely at students' needs based on some of that more map and street-level data. That's the work of our problem-solving teams and responding to students' needs through the MTSS process. And how we are using tier-one instruction and differentiating in tier-one. So that, those are the ingredients that we are, we are working with in order to change that. Why there's such a discrepancy from grade level to grade level? The data doesn't directly reveal that.
And there's also, sometimes when you're using data, there could be just a large group of ML students that are doing really well at fourth grade, that cognitively are doing really well. And if you look at seventh grade at IEP, there might be high-level students with IEP as well. So part of what Kevin said is you want to look at that, but you also want to see which each kid is. And there's groups of kids that move up through the school system. And they're not always the same.
Yeah.
Every single kid is a little bit different, so even within these sets, like, you've got a group of kids in fourth.
Yeah, when you, when you have, you know, in a whole grade level, potentially eight kids who are in that end pool, it really does come down to a lot of individual supports that we need to develop for kids, so. But I show it to you because it is part of the story that we're going to watch develop. Here, you will see the same information broken down by race. And as I had mentioned earlier, you will see a trend among our Black and Latino students primarily that we need to look more closely at. And that's where we go back to our district goals. It's the curriculum, instruction, assessment nexus, strengthening the pieces and their connection between each other. Okay, now I'm going to show you the same information but for math. Okay, so I showed you reading, and I'm going to show you math. So here, this is FastBridge for kindergarten. There are two subtests we administer, number sequence and number identification. Again, this is entry data, right? It is showing you primarily entry characteristics, not a significant curricular instructional effect.
In the reading side, so, and again, I'm guessing this is MTSS-related, but given that there's so much of the distribution in the green here, is there value for looking at the other percent, like higher percentiles as well? And breaking, and kind of like, seeing more like, is there value in getting it to be a little more uniform, so you can see the flow and kind of how performance is changing in different quantiles?
You mean breaking this 50 into smaller pieces?
Let's say, for example, let's say you did 50 to 74 and 75 up. Maybe you'll find that like, that distribution within, that distribution is shifting, right? Like, either it's flat, everyone's in the 75th, the third quartile, quartile, and that's it. Or maybe it's that a bunch of people are moving from third to fourth, right? So that's what I was kind of wondering, like, unless, of course, again, this is used for, I think the MTSS you said was for, you use yellow, like, the below 50 for MTSS. So maybe there's value in looking, breaking that up, given, given the size there.
Yeah. For this assessment, I would say, for the purposes we use it, not with this particular data. MAP and street-level, street-level data, far more valuable for those purposes. Alright, and then you'll see first grade here, decomposing. We just did not administer that subtest in 2024, and that's why there's no data for it. And we're not necessarily looking at growth over time for this assessment. We are looking at those, these, these red, yellow, green bars for the purpose of identifying potential supports for students. Alright, and then here you'll see NWA math, same thing, color-coded by grade. And it looks a little bit different. Something I want to note about math is that nationwide, achievement in math tends to be lower than it is for reading or ELA. That is a statistical trend across the country. You will find all sorts of literature out there about why that is and how that can be remedied. Our district is no different in that regard. It tends to be lower than what you'll see for ELA and math. There is a hotspot here with grades two and three. Something to keep in mind with that, though, is it is the first time students are taking a test like that beginning in second grade, and you could be seeing that effect. And that is something to keep in mind. But it is worth asking the question, how can we normalize that growth across all of the grade levels?
A similar question, what was going on in fourth grade? Sorry?
Yes.
Just, it looks like they're doing really well. Do you know if it's like the content? Is it?
We would need to look at the curriculum, instruction, assessment alignment. But this is one of the, one of the prevailing questions that we will, over time, explore through our math curriculum review process. Okay, and then here you will see the longitudinal data for math. See a little bit of a dip in fall of 2024, and then a recovery in fall of 2025. And then here you will see IEP students and multilingual students. This is a very clear hotspot we're looking at. That is transparently discrepant from the other grade levels. I pose a question about that, because it is something that we need to explore further. Yes, member Jacobs?
I have a question. How is our, our students with 504s included with IEP? Is that separate? Is that not?
I do have that data. I didn't present it here. And it's something that I could easily provide. Students with 504s tend to perform significantly higher than students with IEPs, and yes.
I had a question about ML and IEP. So I know that there are some ML students that have IEPs. So they would be in both sides of the graph, right?
Correct, you are correct. Yeah, they are now parsed out here. And then here you will see the same thing for, for race. And a similar trend, Black and Latino students are showing lower growth than students of other races. And that is something that we need to look at. And similarly, students in any of these groups, which are all self-identified by parents during registration, those could overlap with students with IEPs, multilingual students, students with 504s. But it all goes back to that CIA nexus and the pursuit of our goals in order to drive better results. Alright, now IAR, so this is still curricular and instructional data. This is ELA-IAR results. Okay, so what you're looking at is fall 2022 to the present. So this tells you a different story than NWA. NWA is normed data against all students in the end pool who took the test during that window nationwide, okay? IAR is Illinois-only students, and most importantly, it is based on proficiency according to cut score. It is not relative to a normative measure, okay? Or to a norm pool, rather. So this tells a very different story. This 47% you see in fall of 2022, that is post-COVID. You are seeing the COVID dip in that number. And here you are seeing the recovery. So from 47% to 72%, that is a significant increase since COVID. So that represents a pretty, pretty impressive recovery. And our district should be proud of that. That is the work of teachers, working hard to get kids back into a strong position. You can actually look at these scores in our Illinois State Report Card. I do want to make a note about that, however. The state of Illinois changed the cut scores for, the benchmark cut scores for proficiency in 2025. So this fall 2025 measure is using different cut scores than these prior years. The state superintendent, Tony Sanders, made it clear that they are not going to go back and reverse engineer all of those proficiency ratings based on the new cut scores. So you are seeing different calculations here. But even with that calculation change, this still would have gone up.
I just hear the state of Illinois really made it difficult to get to proficient. So the state superintendent tried to make it more manageable. So when you see that 60 to 72, we made increases. Probably not 12%, but the state really had some of the most stringent levels to get to proficient than any other state in the Union. So that's what Tony Sanders did. And they're also looking at math right now. But what they tried to do is kind of bring proficient to where it is nationally.
Yeah, yes. And that will be true going forward for all IAR data sets we see.
72 is our baseline.
72 is baseline, yep. And then here you're going to see those same proficiency levels broken down by race. You see the same trend, especially among Black and Latino students. The same solution would apply here in changing those numbers. Now, this is a, this is a very useful comparison, and it is one that this board has requested. So I want to make sure that we clarify what all this means. The first one here is IAR/ELA district comparison among Little Nine and also comparator North Cook districts. Comparing our performance to Little Nine districts is very useful. But there are many other districts outside the borders of the township that are similar in characteristics to our district, and it is healthy to also look at those, okay? So I've selected some of those that are similar, not the same, but similar in terms of size and demographics. So this is where Skokie 73 and 1/2 falls in terms of IAR/ELA achievement. We are easily in the upper quartile of Little Nine and comparative North Cook ROE schools.
Hey, Kevin?
Yes.
I just want to go back. I noticed in the IAR/ELA proficiency by race, I was surprised and delighted to see the gap close a little bit in grade seven, eight, and honestly, three, four, but for our Black students compared to the other students. It looked like there was, am I reading this right, though, that there's an opportunity to provide support more in five and six? And then are Latino and Asian students for grades three and four? I guess Latino students may be up through, like, through the whole, through the whole grades three through eight. Is that, am I reading this right?
You are correct.
Okay. Do we know also if there's any, the distribution, there's a little more, like, the standard deviation could be larger for certain sizes, too, right?
Sure.
Thank you, that's really helpful, no?
Jump back to these comparisons. Here you are also looking at IAR/ELA district, district comparisons for Little Nine and North Cook districts. So here we have Skokie 73 and 1/2, 29% close to the top of the chain in Little Nine and North Cook. That's impressive. That's IEP students, by the way. This is ML students for ELA and IAR, also in the upper quartile. It's impressive. I will also say that some of these comparator districts are similar in size, but they are similar in demographics. Okay. They are, I'll put it this way, they are possessive of democrat, they are possessive of demographic characteristics that might indicate a greater readiness to demonstrate higher growth. I will put it that way. And that we are demonstrating strong growth above some of those districts is a mark of the impressive work that our teachers do with our students. And then here you will see IAR math. So this is mathematics longitudinally. So here you see a little bit of a different story year after year, but you see this jump in fall of twenty twenty five that is partly due to the change in the benchmark cut scores. But that discrepancy is large enough and it cannot be fully accounted by that. So it is reasonable to conclude that there was an increase in the fall of twenty twenty five. Again, the state will not reverse engineer those for us, so it is impossible to say what it would have been under those previous cut scores.
I want to make sure I say that out loud. So, uh, the standard between twenty four, twenty five became more rigorous, meaning that if we had just seen going from thirty four to thirty four, we know that it became more rigorous and likely other schools like also had to keep up, including ourselves. So going from thirty four to thirty four would be impressive. It would mean we've grown. But we didn't go from thirty four to thirty four. We jumped to forty nine, which could be us performing at least as well and a bunch of schools dropping off, but it's likely that we grew and other school, we had better performance in the prior year. And other districts also probably had worse performance due to higher standards.
Yeah. I, I, I'll, the only thing I'll add to what you said, I don't know if I would call them more rigorous, differently rigorous. Okay. Um, but the, the last part you said is absolutely true. Because of those changes, some districts might drop, some might rise. Yes.
And so this picture here, this is not comparing us to any other districts. This is just comparing ourselves to ourselves, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. And then here you'll see math proficiency broken down by race. And you see a similar trend here. Okay. There are student groups by race that are showing discrepant achievement on the IAR. And that is the, for the same reasons, we need to look at it for ELA. We need to look at that more closely for math.
Sorry, I'm just following up on Vicky's comment. So, uh, and, and Kevin, clean me up if I'm incorrect here. So the percentage there has to do with like, it's like a, this isn't exactly right because he says like a cut or something, but it's like a norm, a norm is applied uh, to the score, the absolute score that our district has, and that's based on all those who took the same test. So the number itself, like a fifty percent, um, is based on the performance of all the other schools and the students who took their tests, but we're kind of comparing as well our relative performance to other tests, um, throughout time. Is that, because she had asked, is, are we comparing ourselves to other students or other schools at all in this chart?
I'm asking about that specific slide. That's all I was asking about.
Yeah, about this one, right?
Yeah. So that is just a comparison ourselves to ourselves from your tier.
From your tier. Yes. And again, the cut scores are different than a norm pool for NWEA. All right. So that is not our performance relative to other schools. It is our performance relative to a cut score.
Okay. Could you explain the cut score then? Then I, I probably misunderstood.
Yeah. Yeah. So basically, um, the IAR results in a score that students earn, right? The information you were looking at is the average of our district student scores compared to the cut score. Right? So that would mean that that percentage of our students are achieving a proficient cut score.
Thank you. Okay. So when you said, so in that example that we go from twenty four, twenty five, they literally raised what is the benchmark, that cut score is effectively. And that's, that's why it's like, uh, it's not a comparison to other schools. Thanks for asking that question, Vicky. So it's not relative to other, thank you for that clarification.
You know, Matt is an actuary, so it's not the easiest questions to, you're doing a good job. Uh, Matt is very knowledgeable, but you're doing a good job.
Good questions. I appreciate all the questions. And this is math, uh, district comparisons for the Little Nine and comparator districts in math. So this is a little bit of a different story than it is for ELA.
And I would just say this is why we're spending time looking at a new math curriculum. And down the road, um, as a district, we are looking at being a member of CFC that feeds into the high school district, which there's some cost savings, but if you look where we're at, we want to be better than where we're at right now.
And, um, that goes back to the strength of the curriculum instruction assessment nexus, right? That is our locus of control and we can pull that lever to make these numbers here higher, right? So we are solidly in the middle of the pack, so to speak. Right? But we can be stronger and that's why we're looking at math curriculum. Here you will see the same data, but for IEP students, still middle of the pack. Right? Relative to all other students. Here you will see the same thing for multilingual learners. So that is in the upper half, right? Which is a testament to the strength of tier one, um, inclusive instruction for multilingual learners, but there is room to grow. Now let's shift gears to access. This is one of the last pieces of data I'm going to show you. Okay. So for access is a measure of multilingual learners' language growth over time. The access test is one that is administered nationwide to any student who, according to federal designations, has an LEP or limited English proficiency designation. We don't use that term, but that is the term the federal government would use. Okay? And approximately fourteen point one percent of our multilingual learners receiving EL services. So there can be multilingual learners who are not receiving EL services and therefore would not take the access test. So this is multilingual learners receiving EL services exited the program this year, fourteen one percent of them. The state average is seven point one percent. So that is approximately double the state average. That's huge. That's incredibly strong performance. And our multilingual learner teachers and our classroom teachers should be very, very proud of those results. And those students should be proud of it and their families should be proud of it too. That is great news. So that's, that goes back to the co-teaching model being part of that. And then you can see the student by student breakdown of students who earned a four point eight or higher. That's what's required to exit EL services at each school.
In this last slide, I think, Matt, you had asked, how do we compare at the high school? I just want to preface this last slide is this is a lot of great data that you should look at and celebrate. Because coming from a high school, as a high, former high school principal, this is pretty cool to see how our kids do compared to all the other ones, all the other schools that feed into Niles North. So I know I don't want to take your thunder, but you spent a lot of time getting this together. And it was a question, I think, Matt, you asked back in September. So he put this slide together so the whole board could see this.
I was going to say, I was really happy with this slide too, that's up, but also the, the high school one. So thank you. I know you have to do a lot of work to get it on like one page like this. So, and this whole, thank you very much. This made me really happy.
Yeah, this and, uh, also as a former high school administrator, these are the metrics that high school administrators and teachers look at when they are measuring effectiveness of their programs. So this isn't like we decided that these are important things. These are, this is their scoreboard. All right. They have some other things on it too, but these are the big CNI scoreboard items for them and they are therefore big items for us too. Okay. So the first one you see here is ninth grade core course success. What that means is the percentage of students who are earning a passing grade for core coursework. That would include English, social science, math and science. Okay? So it does not count electives, um, or what we would call specials or exploratories. Ninety seven point five percent of McCracken graduates are experiencing success in their core courses. A ninety seven and a half percent.
Sorry, that number, by the way, um, is that, uh, like for the, that, this was spring twenty four, right? So is this just like ninth grade, spring twenty four? Or is that who we're talking about? We're not talking about like over several years or something?
Correct. Yes. And I just want to make a note about that because it is logical to think, well, what about, what about ninth, tenth grade, eleventh grade, twelfth grade? And it, it's worth noting that once kids get past freshman year, the effect of us on their achievement is diminished significantly and is now more what's happening in like during their time in high school. Um, other Niles North students at about eighty eight point three percent, which is still very good, I will say. So Niles North is doing well, but our students are at ninety seven and a half percent. Ninth grade on track. Okay. So ninth grade on track refers to not just earning passing grades, but students who are passing all of their freshman courses after first semester. Okay. So it is possible that you could be knocking it out of the park in your core courses, but you're failing some of your other coursework. Okay. So this is all courses, ninety seven and a half percent still compared to eighty eight point three percent. SAT suite. Okay. So SAT suite would refer to, um, the PSAT eight, nine, the PSAT ten, the practice, uh, SAT and the official SAT. Um, so what you're looking at is McCracken grads' performance on their most, uh, that grade levels SAT suite assessment. So the average score is eleven, uh, one, uh, eleven oh five point three compared to ten ninety seven point eight for all other Niles North students. That's really strong, that's very strong achievement. That's not a growth number. That's an achievement number and that's very strong. So that is a testament to what every single one of our teachers have done with students across the vertical chain. Not a lot of districts get to measure that because a lot of districts, they leave eighth grade and they go to like three different high schools. That is not true of our feeder schools. We have one school. They all go to Niles North. That is a sign of the strength of our programming. Every ninth grader was an eighth grader. They were a seventh grader. They were a sixth grader, all the way down to kindergarten. So that's very impressive. The state has changed back to ACT. So in the future, you're going to see a different data point there. Um, generally speaking, though, it measures the same things. Fifteen years ago, that would not have been true, but it is now. Yeah. Um, and then there are seniors with early college coursework. This is a really important metric. I'm going to tell you why. Is because participation in college level coursework is not just an indication of like a skills based academic preparation. It is also an indication of how students feel about their capacity for success. It is about their self efficacy. This is why high schools care so much about that metric. It's not just about boasting AP enrollment and scores. It is about being able to say that we cultivate within human students, I was going to call them children, but I don't know if high school teachers would agree with that, within human students, the belief that they can do very hard things. That's why that metric is so important. And look at this. For AP participation, thirty three point seven percent of McCracken grads, at least as of the spring of twenty twenty four, they go on to enroll in an AP course compared to twenty nine and a half percent of all Niles North students. Dual credit participation is also part of that. So there are AP courses and then there are dual credit courses that are partnered with a college or a university. Forty six point six percent, almost half of McCracken graduates go on to take at least one dual credit course before they graduate from high school. That's remarkably high.
Do, is that, do we know if they pass? Like, like, or if they, yeah, I know. It's, I realize this. I mean, I'm still, hey, I remember, I didn't do that, so I'm, I'm impressed. Uh, that'd be interesting though to know if like they also completed or, you know, enroll. Um, I, I was going to say again, thank you for doing this. I think this is, I'm sure it's a lot of manual work to get this and, but thank you for putting that together. I love to see how that changes and over time too.
Yeah. And we can, we can definitely assemble some additional information. All right. So we said, yeah, go ahead, Vicky. I'm sorry.
A few questions for you. As far as the articulation goes, are we including, uh, children with IEPs, five oh fours? All of, that's all, that number is, that's wonderful. Um, I think it's also really exciting that we are preparing kids to challenge themselves. Um, and that, you know, we, you have to have that at an early age in order to, uh, continue to advocate for yourself and believe in yourself in high school. Um, my other question is, I know we've got data for Niles North. Do we have data on Central? Is it valuable of Niles Central? Like where?
Oh, Niles, Niles West?
Niles Central. I don't know if it's valuable information or not because that, that would be, some of our kids might be going to Central versus Niles North.
I see. Yes.
Um, I don't know if it's valuable. I don't know if we have any kids that are going to Central. Um.
We could look into that. Yeah. I don't know the quantity of students, but we could.
I don't think there's a ton.
There's, there's thirty students.
So that might not be very valuable information. Um, do you think?
Hurts to look. Doesn't hurt to look.
Yep. Because we want to make sure that we are preparing those kids as well. Um, you know, one child, two kids, it doesn't matter. It's still very important.
Absolutely.
Um, do you think there would be any value, and this is probably too much work, but to request from the high school, um, as far as our articulation goes, to break down into kind of different groups? Like how are our children from, um, Latino descent doing in high school? Um, how about our, you know, kids from Asian descent, um, black children? How are they doing once they get there?
Yeah.
Um, because I, I would hate to see that, you know, this is represented by mostly, you know, white children. Um, but I think there could be some work between two nineteen and us if we're seeing that trend once they get to high school.
Yeah. We can, I, I, there, we can certainly request that data and it would be interesting to see. Yeah. For the same reason that we look at it for our own metrics, right?
And thank you for getting this. We've been asking for this for years.
Glad it's helpful.
It wasn't on our part.
So we had said from the start that we wanted to make sure that we understood the story of our district's growth based on baseline data so that we could process questions. We processed a lot of questions, so I think we hit that target. So I hope you feel like you're walking away with these two things, um, after we've covered all of those points there, right? It feels like we've probably gotten to all of the questions.
Two more. Uh, so I kind of want to ask like forward looking, and this is coming from, uh, being a new board member. I want to make sure I understand because I know we do a few presentations. So this was on baseline data and I presume as we get to like May?
June.
It's June? Okay. June, we'll do like comparison of baseline to, okay. Uh, and that'll be like, we're able to see how map has changed over the year. Uh, and are there any other, we won't have probably spring twenty five from the high school and IAR out, right?
IAR, we, we may have preliminary data, but they don't release, it's usually over the summer that they release.
Yeah, that won't be available in June. IAR will not be available in June.
Yeah. And then they don't release final scores until October of the following fall.
Halloween.
Yeah, Halloween. So that'll, there'll be a lag in that. The articulation data is something that we could, we could look at. But NWE map will be part of it.
Yeah. And I, I imagine it'd be a rush on there. So I don't know if that's even possible.
Yeah.
Um, from this, I mean, there's a lot of strengths, even the articulation did. I'll say there's a lot of strengths in that. And I know we'll look at it over time. We can get, learn from that. Um, given that there were a lot of strengths, are there other metrics we could look at to identify opportunity areas for our students? I don't know if like, like if I was a high school and K three eight came to me and said, hey, we want to know how our students can make your numbers look better. What do you think we should do? I would imagine they'd be like, yes, we get to tell someone else what to do. Like, so I don't know. Do they, do they share that kind of information with Little Nine?
They do. And I, I, I think you, the things we're doing are the things that they would say. Um, but there are those other levels of data, map and street level data. They don't fit neatly into graphs like they do here. Um, but they are important parts of a story that would tell you something that these numbers don't. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Cause like, for example, course success, uh, is great. I would wonder if there's a way to break it up so you could see like a distribution. Um, because I think it'd be like, if you got a C minus, I don't know if they, I don't, I don't know what grade levels are. It's still, it'd all be, that'd be the same as getting an A, right? So it'd be nice to break that up since that could matter for like some students and we could maybe go, okay, this, there's, this is an opportunity for us to help our students that like, you know, be from just hitting the success metric to, you know, a higher GPA or something, which could help them.
Yeah. It, it, kind of like Vicky was suggesting, I think. Yeah, it, it, kind of like Vicky was suggesting, I think the, the disaggregation of those, of the data for those different buckets is something that we can get. I think that would, we would probably start to max out what value we can extract from it there.
No, that's a good feedback, thank you again for this. And for answering a lot of questions.
Kevin, you did a good job, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Just one last comment, I, I think, you know, we're talking a lot about numbers, and I don't think that tells the whole picture, and I want to be very cautious that as a board, we are only looking at numbers and asking just for numbers, because um they don't tell the whole story. And um I think if we're just comparing today and what we're gonna see in June, that's not necessarily a direct correlation of success, doesn't define the story. So I think we need to be very careful as a board to not get on the dance floor, stay on the balcony and look at the overall picture, and what does success mean? It doesn't always mean just the raw numbers that we're seeing um on MAP. So I, I think there's a lot more to this story than just um standardized testing, which we know is inherently flawed.
Yeah, thanks, Vicky, I think that's a really good point, a good discussion. It's a great presentation, because we're able to kind of as a board let our district know how the district is handling CIA. And I think that's really important, as Kevin noted, the most, the closest way to understand how students are doing is through the anecdotal student experience, which is individualized. And the high-level Illinois score report, Illinois uh report cards, things like that, they do not account for that kind of detail. So you're totally right, Vicky, that is just one indicator for us, so thanks for bringing that up.
Okay, we are now moving to the superintendent's update, Dr. Kyle, do you have anything that you want to highlight?
Yeah, I would, um, Thursday night, December eleventh, at Middleton Elementary from seven to nine, we have our CES four. And, and in that situation, uh, since CES three, we had five hundred and seventy-four residents participating in the survey. We wanted six hundred, we got five seventy-four, that's pretty close. That's really good, so that data will be shared on Thursday night, I encourage all board members to come to listen and learn about what we found out through the survey. Rod and his team are presenting the final results right now, and that will be shared at CES four. We did canvassing, a lot of the staff, probably members that are in the audience, myself and all the administrators and a lot of teachers, went door-to-door and handed flyers to fill out the uh survey, and also attend CES four. Many people asked me, what is the best option? I would tell, I told them all the same thing, I don't live here, you have to tell me what the best option is. So we're still pursuing uh direction from the community of what we should do. So that's coming up on Thursday, uh, we'll probably take a couple of months off and then revisit it in the spring. I do wanna share, over my career, I've probably seen forty middle school plays. And when I got this job, they told me our plays are incredible. And I got a chance to see the Friday night premiere of Matilda here at McCracken, and there were almost eighty students that were involved in that play, and I will just say it was remarkable. It was probably one of the top two best middle school plays I've ever seen, and I'm just gonna say it probably was the best. So I wanted to thank Amy Keibert, Kate Magnuson, Sally Alvarado, the staff, the students and the families, who efforts and talents made that production possible. So if you're a board member and you had a chance to see it, it was incredible. Next, I just wanna share.
It was incredible, I was there Saturday. My husband built that chalkboard.
That was a really cool prop, I mean, the whole thing, the background, the blocks, the chalkboard, the kids, you want kids involved in middle school. To get eighty kids involved backstage, on stage, it was incredible. And they came through the um, through the actual seating area, so I was just, it was the best. So you get a chance to come, come watch our plays. And then, um, you know, the three-point-five million dollar budget reduction is a concern of mine. And um I met with the Hiring and Retention Committee, and they wanted to make sure we continue to give a survey to our staff on culture and climate. So we gave a, uh, we gave this uh survey out last week, last Tuesday, staff had a chance to complete it, and it was closed as of this Monday. So we're gonna get that data, we'll share it with the board, we'll share it with the staff. And one of the things we're gonna do, and I actually think we picked a date, but I don't have it memorized, is we are gonna get the staff together for a winter social gathering in January, January twenty-ninth. So we are gonna try and come together and look at that data, and just like we spent a lot of time talking about student data, this culture and climate data will help us move forward um as a district and see kind of what we need to focus on, and it'll give us baseline on where people are at. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you for that, we are now going to move on to the calendar preview for twenty-sixth through twenty-seventh and twenty-seventh through twenty-eight.
So my goal was to try and, um, two nineteen's got us beat, they have the next three-year calendars done, but I've always worked in school districts where if you can, try and do the next two years forward. So I had the opportunity to meet with all the administrators and our union representatives, and we looked at possible calendars for twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh and twenty-seventh, twenty-eight. And um this past year, we started on a Monday, so the two calendars that you're looking at, both of them will start on Mondays. And both calendars, like a couple of things I wanted to share with the board, just a couple of pieces of like what goes into a calendar. We have to have um a hundred and seventy-six attendance days, two of them can be full uh day parent-teacher conferences days, a hundred and seventy-four for students, minimum of four teacher-institute days, five emergency days, maximum number of days in a year are one eighty-five. We also try to work with the little nine and see what dates they're starting on. North Cook tells us when we should have winter break, when we should have spring break. Um, the start and end is a variant for between each um district, but our start time will be right around NTDSE, which we have a number of students that are out so, outplaced. And one thing we did do is talking to other little nine superintendents, is next year's November election has traditionally been changed to a holiday, and that means we can't have school. So on that uh twenty, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh calendar, we have just gone ahead and just set a non-attendance day on that day, as opposed to saying it's an e-learning day, and then the governor comes out and says, hey, it's a holiday. So that is something I wanted to share with the board. And um in these calendars, we've really tried to keep, it's similar to what we did this year, but every calendar kinda ends differently, so you have both calendars. They're gonna be uh provided to the public to look at and give us feedback, and the goal would be is in January, if there's no problems with the calendars, to adopt them. And um then people can start setting their summer vacations or whatever they do, but we just wanna make sure the kids are back on that first day of school. So I wanted to share both calendars with the board and uh field any questions.
I noted uh four possible conflicts to bring up. Do you, I mean, do you want me to just email those, or do you wanna mention them now?
Yeah, feel free to email them to me, absolutely, cuz I'll get the feedback, and I put that together, and like, community members making me some feedback as well.
Yeah, there were, I think there was like a Sikh holiday, an Islamic holiday and two Jewish holidays, so I'll, I'll email them.
I think in the past, our district has uh decided, at least, what people have told me when I put this calendar together is, there are days that we have school that other religions may not. So I know as our district, there are other little nine school districts that have chosen to give almost all holidays off. That has not been kind of the, the, the district's push in this district.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't specify, um, they were for scheduled board meetings, and um one of them was like the last day of school, I think, or like the start of school, I'm gonna double check.
Yeah, perfect, that kind of feedback, that kind of feedback, or just email me.
I'll email you.
Like, this isn't easy, um, I will tell you, it's always the least popular thing to do is to create a calendar, cuz nobody likes it. Everybody always has input, but what I will say is both unions and administration team, they're behind it a hundred percent and feel it, it's a good representation of the next two years.
If there are meetings that are scheduled on um holidays, though, if we could.
Absolutely, I think that's something we could look at and make sure we don't have to change it in the next two years, we will, we will look at that.
Thank you. We are moving on to the exclusionary discipline report, do we have any?
So um I'm also a member of the Policy Committee, and one of the things I noticed is that in one of the policies, we're supposed to share monthly exclusionary discipline. So as a board, I just wanna share that what you're looking at is really like the first semester exclusionary discipline. And I would say um, when I think about kind of where we're at as a district, we're definitely right in an average range of discipline, um, exclusionary discipline. And I would say this, too, if we were to do the reports every month, I'm a little concerned that some of the confidentiality of who the student is could be out there, so what I'm gonna talk to at the um Policy Committee is if we could change this to possibly quarterly or semester, and then if there's things that you would like as a board that I didn't include in this, please ask me and share what you'd like in there. I know a couple board members have already shared, like Charlie, can we find out how many kids, how many kids is in the report? Are they special ed, IEP five oh four? I've had a couple of requests that way, uh, but if you have any requests from a board, I'd like to hear that from you, so that um starting either next month or starting the end of the third quarter, we could have a report that would fit what you're looking for.
And I think it would be important to maybe look, maybe once a year to get a complete picture of demographics of suspensions.
We can do that for sure.
And also, I just want, it's just, you know, looking at this report, it looks like, you know, we, there's no children going to school. Cuz everybody's suspended, but um I do wanna point out that this is, this goes back to like September, so this is a few months' worth. This is not uncommon, um, and if you just look at it and don't look at the dates, it can look a little dramatic.
Yeah, and that's when I'd say we're right in the like average range for discipline, in fact, in some of my experiences in other districts, we're a lot lower. And that's why I would say we probably don't need this every month, because you might know who the kid is, and part of what I'd like to do is keep it confidential.
Okay, we're moving on to snow days versus e-learning days, everyone's favorite.
I talked about this at the last meeting, and what I'm looking for from the board is, snow days is another decision that I was so excited to do when I got the job as superintendent, and I just found out, nobody likes that decision. So I know the board doesn't wanna make the decision, but what I've heard from people is traditionally, when we have a day, like we get six or seven inches between midnight and six AM, it's probably gonna mean a snow day. And what we've done in the past is done a snow day as the district, that's what people have told me, and then we move to e-learning days. Snow days, just so the board's aware, when we do a snow day, it does extend the end of the school year an extra day. So that means you're going one extra day in June to give the children an opportunity to have a snow day. So what I'm asking the board, really at this meeting, is some direction on, would you like to continue the tradition of doing a snow day? Or do we just do an e-learning day? Now, we use e-learning days for ice, like if there's ice out and people can't get around, that happened last year. We also use e-learning days for extreme cold. I've been in school districts where one time it was four straight days where we had e-learning days, and I think what I would tell the board is if that's the case, I would be in contact with Kelly and the board and start saying, maybe like, at some point when we can get the kids back, we won't do any more snow days, cuz we've already had three cold days. You know what I mean, so we try and balance it. What I'll tell you is, the last big snowstorm that was supposed to be the snowmageddon of ever, all the superintendents and the little, uh, little nine got together and we all had a meeting. We talked about it, we said, let's get up at four AM, let's make another decision. I was on the way here, but everybody was like, it did not turn out how the weather forecasters did, so we had school that day. So what I'm asking for from the board is if you have any direction, if you'd like to stay that same traditional snow day. We did have surveys that are kinda close, but both surveys were e-learning. So a couple of things I would like the community to know in the board is that we have a, a three-year e-learning plan that the community, um, that actually North Cook ISC approved, the state needs to approve, so we do have an e-learning plan. We have used it during COVID and refined it, so it's better, so we've had some experience on it. And um we don't have like data per se, but our e, our e-learning plan has a combination of synchronous and asynchronous, meaning you're with a teacher and you're not, because we don't, people are working, and it's not always easy. And being behind a computer an entire day is not healthy. So we have those options, I just wanted to share that information with the board. I know I've had some questions, I tried to address it with my preamble, but if there's questions from the board, I'm, I'm happy to answer them.
I just think the concern really for me is, how do we better support the working families during e-learning days? I'm not against e-learning days, I just think there needs to be better, like, how do we remove the responsibility of instruction from the parents and guardians to our educators? Cuz I'm, I'm not a qualified educator, I did, and I was teaching, like, I did COVID with a first grader and a first-year preschooler. And that was really hard.
No, it's not easy, I think that's why we try to balance a combination of both, so that it's not all online all day, and it's not all the parents. So you try and do a combination, ideally, I'll be honest, I want kids in school, so I would never wanna have to call a snow day or an e-learning day, but they say this summer, this winter is gonna be like nineteen seventy-eight, I don't know, I wasn't living here. But that's what they're predicting, that's what they're predicting, so we might have uh snow days, we might have some e-learning days. So that was what brought this conversation was, um, feedback from the board, and what I would ask the board is to give me direction if you'd like to do a traditional snow day, but also trust me as the superintendent that when there is a severe weather situation, that I will work with all of our school superintendents that are around here and keep the board abreast of what we're gonna do that day. Not necessarily a board member saying, hey, do this, it's hard enough to make this decision, to be honest with you, at, at four AM, but our goal is to do this and be consistent. That last snowmageddon day, I was the one that said, we need to cancel, and there was another soup that said, yeah, we need to cancel, and the other seven are like, no, let's, let's get up at four, so I was like, okay, let's get up at four. I keep the board abreast of what's going on, and then we made that decision. So um just wanted to share that and see if there's any anything else that I missed that the board would like some explanation on.
Dr. Kyle, I was gonna say, uh, yeah, thanks for that, I, absolutely, I'm just speaking for myself here, definitely defer to you making that call, and you got at least my trust in that you're making that call and you're taking those considerations into account. I was gonna share a few more, just general considerations. And one of them is a question, really, when we decided to a snow day, uh, there isn't like a warming day, right? So, or like kids who have like reduced lunch or something like that, maybe they get breakfast and lunch here, or maybe they don't have heat, you know, they have issues with heat, that's something I was thinking about, if we, if we do a snow day or an e-learning day, we could have, especially cuz I'm thinking back to last uh month, when we talked about like the demographic shift, where we have a larger portion of students, like a third, could be in that situation, do we, we don't do that now, right?
We don't, but I've been in districts where like when you've had four days in a row or five days in a row, there's been times where we've called in families and said, if there's food or if you need that, we would do that. We have not done that traditionally in this district, but I've been in another district where we had four days in a row or five days in a row, and there's a lot of people that don't have food, we would open up and oper, open up that opportunity. But when you have a snow day or an e-learning day, that usually means people aren't in, unless they're like two-hundred-and-sixty-day calendar people like me. And then what I usually tell them is, either take a day off or drive in safely and wait till the roads are safe till you get in. So we don't have a lot of, like, the teachers wouldn't be coming in, they could be doing their e-learning from wherever they need to do it.
I think we had a modified version during COVID where we actually, our school bus driver delivered food to the kids um in the neighborhood, which was really cool. So um I don't know if we have a plan, should we, you know, have some kind of an emergency? And I also want to make sure that we're talking about snow days here, but it could be a flood, it could be a water main break like we had last year.
Be the electricity like last year.
Right, and so, uh, you know, this is a plan for any of these, and if they, they can add up, right? And you don't wanna be, I, I'm sure our staff and probably our families don't wanna be in school for an extra two weeks, because, you know, water main break, freezing, whatever other natural disasters happen. So um I think we need to be very cautious um about taking snow days. I think part of it depends on, have we had any emergencies prior to that, you know? Where we closed down for four or five days in September for something, so I think it's kinda nuanced, I don't think it's that clear, and I'm not, I think it's, it would be your call.
It's definitely nuanced and there's a lot of different reasons that you'd have an e-learning day.
I agree. Uh, my, my ask is also just continue like did before to like communicate as early as possible. Um, um, you know, so families can make arrangements or the high school kid can help out or everything. So just making it easier, like, like you, like you have done. I know like in, um, 219 when we had the water main break had to like, it was called way, way too late. That's, that's not fair to, to any parents, to teachers, to, you know? And I hope they, I know they've learned from that lesson. I
I think we'll continue to do what we did in that situation where we needed to wait at night. We communicated to families that tomorrow by five or five 30, we would communicate. Our goal is to always open the doors if we can, and if it's safe. And just tip my cap to Ed, uh, and the maintenance crew. Cause they were here at four when I was driving in. And they've done a really good job and they've already had three big removals already this season. And we're in the early week of December. So I, I just think we're going to get a lot of snow this year. We may not have a lot of snow days, but we're going to get a lot of snow.
And I think also it's important for families to know that you are entitled to have five mental health days a year. So if it's not right for your child, it's okay for you to take the day off and ask the teacher for an assignment later on. Um, you know, you're not in college and missing an entire week. We're talking about first through eighth grade. And I think, you know, as parents, we know what's best for our child. And if it's not right for them, I'm sure that the staff would work for you. I think we're all traumatized from COVID of, you know, doing this for a year and a half, but we're talking about a day or two. Um, you know, so, you know, it, it's, it's a sore subject for a lot of people, but it's, it's a very temporary fix, hopefully.
Any other, uh, statements or feedback from the board?
Um, I was going to say, I appreciate you sharing the surveys on board docs. If you're interested, the surveys from last few years are on, are for staff and I believe parents filled that out. And yeah, uh, when it, I was going to just mention that I, I counted like 46 of the parents preferred non-attendance days under heavy snowfall while 37 preferred e-learning. However, it did shift for extreme cold, as you kind of mentioned, that e-learning maybe was favorable. So I just, all, from that I kind of, you know, the district can only work with what it has. And from that survey, it's very much nuanced. Uh, younger children, it's harder at home to do, to successfully accomplish e-learning. Um, especially if a parent's supposed to try to work, uh, or they have to decide to take off PTO and it's hard on families. If they need to take, they might not have PTO in our district too, to take off. Um, so, uh, you, and you know, all this, I appreciate that you consider that when deciding to apply a snow day or an e-learning day or keep the school. So thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, we're going to move on to the financial update.
Let me get situated. Um, so in the financial update, you, um, have a new item in your packet. And so you have what you have gotten in the past, the finance, the statement of position that come from the reconciled financials from, um, two months ago. So it's ending October 31st. In addition, I'm now going to be providing you, um, from forecast five, a report monthly. Um, it looks at, um, revenues year-to-date, expenditures year-to-date, revenues and expenditures, um, for the month of, um, in this case, October, the month that we're looking at. And then a fund, fund balance as of that month. So just on that new report, some things to highlight. So if you're looking at the revenue, you're going to see that in general. Um, October, we're four months since we're a little past a quarter. Um, so our state and federal revenue are kind of tracking appropriately. As we all know, our local revenue is not. It's at 3%. Um, we would like to see it be higher, but it's coming. So I hear. And then if you, um, then click over to the second page where we're looking year-to-date, um, expenses, you can kind of see we're kind of in line around um, that 30, near 33%. Um, with supplies, materials, we're a little higher, but we buy things ahead of time. So that is expected. And then our salaries. Our teachers start, our teacher salaries start in August. So that's why they're always going to be, they're going to catch up through the year, um, as we um, go forward. So everything is tracking appropriately, except for our local revenue at this point.
Karen, I have a question. So, um, at the Ed Red meeting, um, on Friday, there were CSBOs from all over our area. And Joe, you can answer this too possibly, but, um, a lot of districts were, um, concerned because we don't have a timeline about when we'll start getting money from Cook County. We know that there's a deadline to pay your taxes, December 15th, but we don't know anything about distributions. And I know there's a huge financial, um, implication for a lot of districts. How are we doing with that?
Um, it's, so we are seeing our fund balances come down, but at the moment we are doing okay. We don't need to issue any, um, debt at this point to cover that. And we do have some ability to transfer fund balances if it, if they would continue to delay. But at the moment, we're hopeful that we will get some of that revenue in December and then hopefully by January as well.
Thank you.
Okay, boss. Last time we were, uh, last time we looked at the treasurer's website, which was maybe last week. Uh, we hadn't gotten anything in, but normally the, the way this comes in is twice a month. So we're expecting something around the 15th, hopefully something around the 30th.
And do they typically distribute money at once? Or is it kind of just like they go several times?
They have a couple of dates in a month and then whatever isn't distributed or, you know, people, I think people have the whole month of December, right? So whatever comes in at the end of December.
December 15th is the due date.
15th? So yeah, so we, we should get most of it by the 31st.
Thank you.
I'll just continue to say, this is something that we are continuing to track in our office that we're aware of. And, um, I've had conversations even today with, um, a couple of CSBOs um, in the area where we're all kind of speculating on what we're hearing coming out of Cook. So we're tracking this.
On a separate note, I was going to say thank you. This report is new. I hadn't noticed it before in the finance, the, the monthly budget, we're able to show the percentage. We talked about it in the finance committee meeting. But it's new, right? The fast fi- the, what's it called? Forecast five?
Yeah, we, we purchased forecast five this year. And so these are reports, um, coming out of that software that we've purchased.
I just wanted to say thanks for doing that. I think it's great. It's a good addition to the finance committee meeting, which everyone should attend because it's the greatest meeting there is. Um, but it's also good here. Policy is great too. I'm on that one. I know it's great. I know.
I, I second the finance.
You can't steal my thunder. Are we moving on to tuition reimbursement for certified classified staff?
Tentative budget calendar be next.
Oops, sorry. Let's do tentative. I marked it off. I'm ready to go. Tentative budget calendar. Sorry about that.
I know. You're so excited about this one. Um, so we're, this is in your packet. If there are questions on this, I can, um, answer them. Um, otherwise, um, in effort of efficiency, if the board doesn't have any questions or discussion on this item at this point, then we can just move on.
Okay, we're moving on. Tuition reimbursement for certified classified staff.
This is a listing of the approved tuition reimbursements for our two unions who have tuition reimbursement inside of their contracts. And so this is for your review.
Okay, we are moving on to triple I conference voting results. I can make a report on that. I was the delegate. Uh, the resolution, the one resolution that they had passed, um, everyone who was nominated, got elected and all of the constitutional amendments, uh, were changed. Any future possible agenda items, other discussion items?
Yeah, um, I was going to follow up. So I think it was in April or May. Uh, well, we had some students come and, and share, uh, before the board that they were hoping we would look into composting food waste. Um, and I think we added it to the agenda. I proposed it, but I also know there's been a lot of change and reprioritization, which is super okay. Uh, so I was kind of going to ask if we could look ahead, I think, I don't know if you've said May or something, but look ahead to have that conversation at a future board meeting. And specifically, I think the goal would be to know what options exist for us as a district to contract out composting or compost ourselves or not. Uh, and, um, if we could kind of explore, I don't know if it'd be possible to bid or explore options of such costs and just have a discussion on the strategic use of that.
Yeah, I think it was before my time because at first I'm like, I don't remember that, but
It was definitely before your time.
I'll learn a little bit about composting, but yeah, we can, we could circle back to this sometime in February or March and see what it looks like and, and see what other school districts are doing and bring that back to the board. We could do that.
Thank you.
And we, we've had this discussion previously. I think some of the challenges that, um, are, um, like who's doing the splitting and, you know, um, like making sure that forks aren't ending up in the food garbage, you know, for first graders. So there's a cost associated with it, not just, you know, cost of like hiring somebody, but also, um, of the cost of staff that has to oversee it. Um, and so it, it's kind of a complex process. I know we've done that before locally in the school and we used it for our garden. Doesn't mean it can't be done. I think we could be creative. I think we have other priorities right now, but it's definitely, uh, you know, something to discuss later on. But there are a lot of challenges with composting.
Yeah, I, I understand that. And, and you know, it could be even that we just decide to use as an opportunity to practically teach our kids how to separate what is food waste. And, you know, it might not be that we have a lot that we can actually do with it. Cause it is, it could be expensive to actually compost. But, um, you know, so that's why I just feel like it'd be a good thing to school, you know, we, we value taking care of the environment in the school and it'd be great if we can find a way to use that as an educational and be, be an example and educate our kids. But that's why I also want to emphasize again, like if it needs to be punted further out, I understand that. And, uh, I just wanted to call it to attention.
I'm going to, I'm with Matthew. I do think it's worth discussing. I think we owe it to our children to set that great example for them. And, you know, we make a land acknowledgement every meeting. I think we need to honor that.
I think we should also look in ways that we could feed into what the village is already doing too. And have another site, so.
I think I can speak to some of the history and some of the current. So when we, we're looking at this originally, the village wasn't do, doing the village composting. And so we can look to see if that changes the picture. Um, I still have all the contacts from when we looked at this before. The other thing that we looked at, um, kind of in relation to this was share tables. Um, and so, um, that's another thing that when we bring this, I could bring a couple of different things that we have looked at in the past and potentially.
Thanks, Karen. It's good to have that history.
Okay, are we moving on to committee reports and outside organization board representative reports? I'll go first. Board policy committee, we met on November 13th. There's first read and review of policies today. Uh, finance committee.
Okay, uh, I don't know if I asked this here or later, a new business question. The, so there might be a point of order. I, I had questions about the policy meeting because I was not able to attend, but I saw there was like three that we did edits. But it says the edits will be in blue, but I don't see it on board docs. I just noticed that. So I didn't know if the one on board doc is the most current version. And I want to know because we're going to vote on it.
It's a, it's a review today, so we're not voting on it.
Okay, I saw it in new business. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Well, then, uh, if there's nothing there, I can do the finance committee meeting if you'd like.
Yeah, please.
All right. Well, uh, most, pretty much everything we talked about is going to be shared today. Uh, the levy, all the notes are, uh, are on board docs. We discussed the levy. We discussed the new, um, financial report. Uh, the school maintenance grant, I'll let Karen share all that. Uh, we had a discussion about the annual statement of affairs as well, and the budget timelines were very helpful. We're going to have a later discussion item, I think for, did I miss it? For preschool fees? It is on here, right? Yeah. So again, I'll, I'll, if you want to see some additional notes, they're here. And, um, the transportation ideas for fiscal year 27, it's on board docs is a breakdown of that proposal. The board is having an open meeting. The next finance committee meeting will probably be devoted to a lot of that discussion, right?
Yeah, the next finance committee will be, entire board will be invited and it'll be just on the topic of transportation.
Okay. And that meeting is open to public for those who?
Absolutely.
Okay. So if you want to know what's going on with busing, transportation in the district, uh, and if you just like numbers, I encourage you to come. That's it.
Okay, Ed Redd. Um, I attended, uh, the Ed Redd meeting December 5th. Um, there was a presentation about the EL consortium, which we are now part of. Um, it's an organization of school districts to help better understand the impact of programs for ELs throughout Illinois, which is cool because we've never had data previously. Um, and the goal is to create and maintain an evidence-based framework uh, so that districts can serve EL students and families using data and best practices. So it's, it's a new thing. We're part of it. Really exciting. Um, there was a lot of discussion about the impact of the Lake Cook County tax collection and distribution. Uh, many districts are losing significant amount of money, um, and interest because they're having to take out loans. It doesn't sound like we're in that situation. So I'm very pleased to, uh, hear that. Um, it, it is my understanding that there was a, the delay was caused by a software glitch, um, and the provider that they're using. Um, there is also an expectation that there will be a state bill passed by the governor covering a cell phone ban in schools. It is his own, um, bill. So, um, the expectation is that it's going to pass. Although there's a lot of pushback by districts because most districts just want to, they don't need any more mandates. They can manage, uh, their classrooms. Um, Ed Redd is neutral on that. And there's a lot of pushback, um, on this mandate, um, mostly concerning discipline. Um, so we shall see what happens. And it looks like the FOIA and the OMA, um, changes are now law. NTDSI?
There was no meeting. It's tomorrow. Uh, member Jacobs will be attending in my absence.
Do we have anything from the PTO? There is an attachment. If anybody's interested, we are moving on to new business.
Resolution of the tax.
Do we just, I make a motion?
Before we take action, the board will have an opportunity to discuss the 2025 tax levy resolution. Um, any questions or comments at this time? May I have a motion to approve the resolution for the 2025 tax levy?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by member Glebe, seconded by a member Chen. Roll call, please.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Glebe?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Chen?
Yes.
The motion carries. We are now moving on to the school maintenance grant. Before taking action, the board will have an opportunity to discuss the school maintenance grant. Please share any questions or comments at this time.
Yeah, could, uh, Karen, could you share a little bit from, perhaps from the finance committee, just what this is?
Sure. Um, so the school maintenance grant, this is a grant that is a matching grant from the state of Illinois. Um, we're looking at maybe another year, maybe two years, depending on their funding, that this grant will be available in the state of Illinois. Um, we are, the matching is up to $50,000. And so we currently, um, have a grant that we got in 2024 that, that we haven't utilized yet, that we have still to utilize this year. And so you see that in your packet. Um, we have, um, two years and, um, two months from the date that we acquired the financing. So lucky for us, the year that we got it, it didn't get financed until, um, June. So we didn't get our money from the state. So we have until the end of August to utilize that grant this year. So we're going to be doing that McCracken roofing project, um, as part of our summer work. Um, because we're doing that project and because Myers roof also needs, um, work, we're going to, um, either through a cooperative, um, purchasing, um, group or through the bid process, um, get those roofs through one contractor to hopefully get a lower rate on both roofs. And we are writing this year's school maintenance grant for that Meyer roof. And so, um, the Meyer roof portion, Gilbane estimated And so the Meyer roof portion, Gilbane estimated at six hundred and sixteen thousand, we do think that is maybe a high estimate. But we, that is the number they provided, so we're gonna start there, and hopefully we'll come in lower on that.
I wanted to clarify that, a question I had, so we originally estimated the project's gonna be like a hundred fifteen, because that was just focused on McCracken's garage. I'm looking at like the.
The school maintenance grant from twenty-four.
Yeah, that's right, and I'm sure prices have gone up. And then we're expanding to take care of some of our tenure facility plan by tackling Meyer's roof, because you can, you know, it's cheaper to do them both together, is that the idea?
Yes.
I like that, that sounds great to me.
Okay, may I have a motion to authorize the school maintenance grant?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Chen, seconded by Member Jacobs. Roll call, please.
Member Chen?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Glebe?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes. The motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to approve preschool tuition fees and class size recommendations. Before taking action, the board will have an opportunity to discuss the preschool tuition fees and class size recommendations. Please share any questions or comments at this time.
And just so everybody's aware, we brought this to the finance committee, because we have seen a decrease in enrollment at Meyer. The Meyer administration has asked us to start the process sooner next year. So obviously, January first is next year in the calendar, so that's why we brought it to the board. And Karen's gonna go into a little bit more detail on it, but if the board doesn't feel like with just four people, if this is something you wanna wait to vote on for the January board meeting, that's okay as well. But we wanted to place it here, just so that the board has opportunity to hear, discuss, and you could decide if you'd like to take action. Karen?
So this is looking at the tuition fees for both residential, resident and non-resident rates for our preschool program, and the class size for the preschool program. So the recommendation for the increase in tuition is three percent, that's following the CPIU, that U stands for urban, that is averaging near three percent currently. So that is, if you look at the second page, the second attachment, you'll see what that increase looks like for both programs. And then, as in the past, we, if someone has financial need, there will be seats available for discounted tuition at either the fifty percent if they would qualify for reduced under the USDA guidelines, or a hundred percent if they would qualify under the USDA guidelines for free. In addition, students who have, who qualify for services under the Individuals for Disabil, with Disabilities Education Act, or under section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act, attend at no charge. One of the things that we are looking at this year is the class size, previously, pre-COVID era, and before bringing back the NTDS. We had twenty students in our, in each preschool section, that falls in alignment with the state recommendations, and the recommendation for the preschool for all grant program, which we are looking to apply for. And so it's our recommendation that we move to that class size for the coming year in preparation for that, and following that recommendation.
And so we have a team getting ready to do the preschool for all grant, but I had an opportunity to do that in Burr Ridge. And you, it'll open up sometime in the spring, and we won't find out if we get it or not until October. But I know from a prior district, it's almost the equivalent of like one FTE teacher and a couple of assistants that you would get. So one of the things we're looking at is obviously increasing that class size, because the governor wants more kids in preschool, because the more kids that are in preschool, the more kids are gonna start out, you looked at the data that Kevin was showing, they're gonna do better going into kindergarten and first grade. So that's what we wanted to share with the board, because I know, like, the whole how is coming in January, of sharing with the board, how are we gonna get to that three point five million dollar cut? But we've been asked by the administration of Meyer to bring this to the board a little bit early, so that's why I shared the preliminary. I don't know if you wanna share anything else, Karen?
At the finance meeting, Matt had asked about kind of the financial revenues expenditures for preschool. I pulled those numbers, kind of, you know, kind of looking at averages. Right now, our expenditures are out, outpacing our revenue for our program, it's, that's consistent across years. Last year, my estimate is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Where, to say, when we look at the preschool for all program, if we were to be able to get that grant, we're looking at, you know, potentially a teacher at about eighty thousand dollars, if we're taking an average, and two paraprofessionals at about fifty thousand dollars each. That grant makes a big difference, and, and then when we add in additional students, the revenue from those additional tuition based is going to increase, not increase, decrease that gap as well. And so there's a, there are a number of positives to both of the things that we're looking at for this program.
And one of the pieces too, is there's kids that we have that are scholarshiped, or at a lesser price, that right now, we only have so many spots. If we open it to twenty, though, we will have more opportunity for more kids to get services that they're not getting right now. So it opens up a couple more special ed, a couple more students that would be considered, I don't know what you call it in your presentation.
Discounted seats.
Discounted seats. So it does open up more students, and what I would just say is my experience in a district that had thirteen sections of early childhood, the more kids we get into early childhood, the better they're gonna be in the long, long run. Like even if we lose the money on preschool, it's worth losing the money, because we'll get it back on the other end. And right now, I do know, because people have said, can we have just more kids that are, I would say scholarship, scholarship, but.
Discounted.
Discounted, sorry, and we don't right now. So that's what we're looking at, that is part of the how too, that's in January. And I know Board Member Chen had just asked, is this something we really should vote on today? That's up to the board, but definitely ask Karen questions, because this is all the information we have, and if we kick it to January, we're still okay to do what we need to do, it just means we'd have to vote in January.
I wanna follow up just a little bit on the potential table until January. I know the admin was hoping for it, does this set back any, anything else the admin, does this set anything back for you guys to, to wait a month to make sure we have more of the members on, here?
Currently, they are looking to open registration in February, so approving now gives them more time in preparation for that, to get everything in place, but approving in January still gives them time to get everything in place. And so you could go either month.
And I think if we give more time, I think it's best, I, I haven't heard anything from any other board members, and I, I'm not sure what the concerns are, what's gonna change in January that we have to put it off.
No, and it was about if there, if the people, the question was if, because there's four of us here and there's three, we, you know, can't be here, so that was the, that was the question at least that was being raised.
Yeah, we have quorum, we can wait, we can go ahead and vote.
I was gonna, I just really wanna emphasize this point for anyone listening, I really, really appreciate the robust explanation here. So even though we could be raising the number of students and applying for a grant, the district is also opting to take advantage of the opportunity by having more seats in the classroom to offer more discounts. And you had a really good slide in the finance committee meeting, Karen, where you kinda laid out like this is how many students, the, the distribution of seats. And so it's like, let's say you add four more students who are full paying, and maybe you have one that's discount, or you have another that's an IEP or something. I, I'm trying to share the visual, but.
Yeah, right now, we have two student seats per section that are discounted. Doing, adding, going to twenty, we could add another seat per section, so we would have three per section. We have the, I always say the two numbers wrong, is it seventy thirty or thirty seventy? How do you? Seventy thirty, I always get which one goes first wrong. That is general ed to the students who have services ratio that we have to manage. With twenty in a section, we're able to add seats there as well, where we can have more students who are able to access those services, so.
And, and there's a minimum for that grant, right? It was twenty, if, that's why we're setting it at twenty?
The grant recommendation is twenty students with a ten to one ratio of student to teacher, student to adult, sorry.
When you apply, they want you to get more, like part of the applications, if you get it, you look at what your enrollment was last year to this year, and how do you increase your enrollment to get more kids in?
Thank you.
With these changes, how, how much of the gap do we close with the expenditures and revenues? You said almost, or?
So if we were to get the preschool for all grant, I don't have, I haven't, so I'm doing this, with the preschool for all grant, we, if we were to get two paraprofessionals and a teacher, we'd be looking at about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that two, two hundred and fifty that were, so it makes a significant difference if we're able to get that grant.
Thank you.
I think we're good to call the question.
Yeah, may I have a motion to approve the preschool tuition fees and class size recommendation? Roll call, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Member Glebe, seconded by Member Jacobs, roll call, please.
Member Chen?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Glebe?
Yes.
And Member Wolfinger?
Yes. The motion carries, we're gonna move on to policy first read and review.
Sorry, Matt, I just have a real, so the edits are on page fifty-eight and seventy-eight, and we're editing seven one fifty and policy seven one ninety, and they are in blue.
So if it's crossed off, that means it's being taken out?
And then again, there's no action, this is just for first read and review, next month, we'll bring it to old business, and then you'll vote on it.
Any other questions? Okay, we're moving on to the consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was gonna ask you if you could explain, because I know, Vicky, you were there, do you know why we removed the, it was just the SRO statement, and then what was the other one? They weren't large, from, they didn't deviate much from what.
We don't have an SRO, so there's no need to have it.
But I meant the other one.
Can you guide me, there were a lot of policies that we went through.
Yeah, the seven, I think one ninety, right?
We changed his or her to their.
Okay, all right, thank you, nope, no other questions then, thank you.
Wonderful, okay, very good. We are moving on to the consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Glebe, seconded by Member Jacobs, roll call, please.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes.
Member Glebe?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
And Member Chen?
Yes.
The motion carries. Okay, I did, it's not eleven o'clock at night yet. Oh, do we have public comments? Again, you have three minutes to speak, don't all rush over there. Okay, nobody's rushing. All right, if there are no public comments, we are going to move on to adjournment and.
Calendar review.
Oops, so sorry, you didn't put it on my little, I'm depending on this. Thank you for holding my hand, America, I just found out that I was running this meeting earlier today, and I was not ready. All right. CES number four is tom, no, the eleventh, tomorrow is Wednesday, it is on Thursday at Middleton at seven to eight thirty, it's really important for us to hear back from the community. Please come if you can, if you can, we do wanna hear feedback, we're kinda getting to that point where we're, we have more information, and we can give you some numbers. And we definitely want to hear from the community. Winter break is December twenty-second through January second, hope everybody has a nice warm break. Regular board meeting is Tuesday, January thirteenth here, and Karen, you said NTDSC is tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, and I think.
Just wanna add, I know December's very, very busy, but the PTO has a fundraising event at Dencios on twelve eighteen, read your weekly for more updates.
Get some euros, thank you.
Okay, are we there now? Okay, awesome, now we're at adjournment, so we reached the final item, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Member Glebe, seconded by Member Chen, roll call, please.
Member Chen?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Glebe?
Yes.
Member Wolfinger?
Yes. Okay, the motion carries, the meeting of the Board of Education is now adjourned at nine twenty-four PM, thank you all for attending.
Vicky, good job.
I didn't sweat.